Okay, now we know.
Okay, so I guess we will. Call the November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Delta Township Link Mission to Order. Everyone, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, we call the roll, please. Joe Kozowski here. Are you at a proctor?
Here.
Our world presence. Wendy Bradley.
Absent tonight.
Mike Meadow.
Here.
Our Audrey.
Here.
Bob McConnell.
Present.
Rachel Zenga, absent, David Howell.
Here.
Chairman, we have a court. Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Support? It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Uh, seeing no one here, we'll bypass public comments. And move into the business of the meeting, uh, which is a work session to discuss the development of the master plan.
Okay, well, first of all, thanks everyone for being here, we really appreciate your help as we navigate this master plan process. Uh, there's just a lot of work to do, so this is, um, really appreciate everyone being here and, um, working through all these kind of loose ends. So, um, we're hoping to continue the discussion that we had from the last work session. The first item on the agenda is the categories follow-up. So just briefly, we spent a good portion of the last work session going over the draft future land use categories. So, um, follow-up from the last time is we were able to get the two mixed-use categories combined, or the mixed-use. So M U R, um, Dave, can you page that to the next page, please? Just show those categories. Um, mixed-use commercial office and mixed-use commercial office residential will be one category. That's the only change that's been made so far, the consultant team pushed back on the breakdown on the single-family from phase one. Or from page one. So, uh, short of rewriting that, I'm not really quite sure where to go with those right now, we have kind of accepted them as is for now. And are focusing on the property designations versus the categories. So, um, that's probably the more crucial component is what did the property, what are the properties actually designated? So at the end of the day, the consultant does not drive this bus, I mean, that's not lost on me, it's just kind of lack, for lack of, um. We would have to rewrite those at this point, I, I, I have not either had the time or, um, aren't sure where to go with that. So I'm not sure if the group feels strongly about redo, uh. I would say probably changing the four that are on the right side of the screen right now into two. Or if we want to proceed with the four categories as they are now. I think that I'll speak for our team and they can chime in if they feel about, um, want to, but. We're having trouble distinguishing between the four of those, I think agriculture is pretty straightforward, we know what properties are agriculture. The suburban cluster are fairly, you know. Identify themselves rather easily, it's the difference between rural preserve and suburban estates that we were struggling with probably the most. One of the challenges is that we know. And I'm not surprised by this, but when we went through the public input process, not a lot of people. Said that they would like to reduce the number of categories, but, you know, most people aren't probably, that is at front of mind for most people either. So that's probably the biggest challenge, so I wanted to gauge the planning commission's commitment to keeping the four categories. For single-family as is, or if you'd like to see those combined. My initial, my gut instinct is that there needs to be fewer. However, writing those to better at, more accurately reflect. The residential developments in the township has been challenging so far. So we kind of pivoted to just making sure that the properties are designated what we think they fall into better than, more than anything. So that's the conversation to date on those categories, there's no issue combining the, again, not that we need permission from the consultant team, but. There hasn't been an issue, they wholeheartedly agreed to go with our direction on the mixed-use.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if, if an individual is reading this and then reads zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be any confusion?
I don't think so, the zoning is going to stand for, on its own, we will not, um, be realigning the zoning to match up with each of these categories, we'll still. Have more or less just a single, single-family designation. For now. So, uh, uh, overlay like a plan unit development would still continue to have its own standards.
So that was actually one of the questions that I was going to ask is if there was going to be a connection here where. You know, they would align in some way, shape or form, and the reason that. I guess that was confusing for me when I was reading through these, only because. There's some specific language that's called out in these that says like, hey, you know, this is what we would intend to see in this area, or. This is what we would see perhaps, or one of these, I can't remember which one it was called out, like, um. Uh, granny flats or other pieces that would fall into there, but none of the other areas reference those in any way, shape or form, and that's something that's called out through the zoning component. It's not incorporated into these descriptions. So if I were looking at this from the outside, not having any idea of how they fit together and what they work with. How would? How would I know that?
Well, specifically to the comment about the ADUs, so the granny flats, those are identified in. Oh, tr- traditional neighborhood, I believe.
Yes, yes, it is traditional neighborhood where the ADUs are spoken of.
So to us, and we've talked about this a lot, but what, um, that is, seems to be kind of the most flexible, single-family district. They speak about variety of lot sizes, diverse range of architecture, um, single-family homes may accommodate other options like duplexes, triplex or ADUs. So. That's, that's where those are found, um, but it, the, the first part of your question, I mean, in terms of trying to designate. Some character around these first categories that I, I, I know I'm struggling with that part of it. I don't know if anyone else is seeing the same thing. And what is the difference between rural preserve and suburban estates continues to haunt me. And how can we explain this to people, once the consultants moved on to the next town? With a straight face, how can we explain this to people? Is there an intent for, would you like us to continue working on refining these, to drill, to kind of break those down into two categories rather than the four? I was just hoping to get a little bit of guidance from this group, um, or at least. Kind of sign off on our approach to this, of leaving these as is and trying to match them better with the map as opposed to try to reconfigure these categories.
I would suggest that if you were struggling to define what it is. Um, and yeah, I think maybe refine that might not be a bad idea.
I am kind of looking for that support, I mean, I wanna, I need to go back to this group and say, hey, we've talked to the planning commission. They agree with us, we're not, these aren't working for us, it either mean to refine the descriptions and really try to. I think what would help us the most that we've tried internally is matching these type developments and what would actually. Um, align with, with some properties out there, so they've made an attempt to. If you're, David, your count and mics, all of the, all of them, like until you get to table, need to be on.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, if you guys could just pull your microphones down, I think that's what we're, why it's not being caught, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, hope.
So.
You know, would it be helpful? On our discussion, I'm thinking that we should combine these and. Having a little difficulty at this point to leave them as is, and perhaps as you do. Work down the road. On the master plan, maybe something that just hit you and say, this is what we should do.
That would be fine, we don't have to make a decision now, I know the consultant's looking for some input. Um, but, you know, and I don't think changing some words around. A month from now is really going to damage any content necessarily, whether we call something rural preserve or whatever we name it. Uh, will still be relevant, it's still a, a, a land typology that needs a name. So if, if, is everyone comfortable that, as long as we continue to kind of strive towards refining these, make a little more sense, whether they change their names, combine some categories.
Yep.
Peter, what about? When you look at the future land use map that was, um, in the packet. And you see the yellow there, low-density residential. And then perhaps you can say low-density residential is defined as, and then. Rural preserve or suburban estate, you know, and then go into that definition.
Okay.
Um. Because I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we ought to can. All of these definitions. Because in the end, these have, this has to be user-friendly. And. You know, when you're going through these definitions and you're trying to find the difference. Between one definition from another. I think the end users of this information are going to struggle with it too. And they're going to wonder, you know. Am. Am I locked into rural preserve, or am I locked into suburban estate? You know, if I'm doing low-density residential. Um, am I locked into two-family residential if I'm using suburban cluster and? Um. So, I don't know. But I. This is so simple to use. The low-density, two-family, multiple-family manufactured home, park, da-da-da-da-da, it's so simple to use. And it just seems taking that and then, you know, coming up with twelve different categories. Um, just makes it harder, harder to use and harder to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in some ways, as we go down the line. Uh, I think I've used the phrase before that, you know, we're looking at a distinction without a difference in some cases. Uh, I think that might become clearer. Uh, as we start getting into the implications for zoning and that sort of thing, we may very well reach a point where we go. In terms of practical on-the-ground application. It doesn't really matter whether you're in A or B. In which case, at that point, I think we can discuss, you know, combining the two into a, a new category or whatever, but I think it'll become clearer as we start. Teasing out the implications of this.
Okay, well, what I'm hearing is there seems like there's support for continuing, at least what we've done so far in terms of combining the mixed-use and the commercial office. And, um, proceeding to refine these residential categories. Over the next, whatever number of weeks. And I'll give that direction to the consultant, and they'll just have to live with, we all live with some ambiguity in our lives, I guess they'll, they'll have to join us. So we'll get there, we'll get there, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to update at least that we're not there, we're not there tonight, but we're working on it. Inspiration will strike at some point, it'll be eleven o'clock on a, some evening, I'll take some, scribble some notes down and share it with everyone. So that's where we're at with the categories, and if, um, there's support, I'd like to move on to the future land use map, and that's kind of what we had teed up. So, um, a little preamble on this, so our team has spent considerable amount of time going through the map using air photography, you know, satellite imagery. And, um, looking at ownership of property, tapping into kind of a development, um. World in the sense of, as part of my, in, in my role specifically, I meet with. Fairly often with folks that, um, property owners that want to develop things, things have been. Kind of people are kicking tires on, or that have been previous proposals that never got constructed, so we have a pretty good idea of where the development pressure is and. Which property owners and which areas of the township are motive, motivated in one way or another, or. Have, uh, the proper infrastructure or owned by an entity that we know is, you know, that isn't in the business. So using kind of all of that information, um, as we teased la- at the last work session, have identified these eighteen, there's still eighteen? We don't, eighteen areas in the township where we think that the land use that was submitted by the consultant needs to be updated to reflect all of those things that I mentioned. So, um, to that end, over the last week and for the direction of this group, we did meet with, um. One day we met with Doug and David, and then we met with Marita, and then I did a call with, um, and, oh, and Bob joined with Marita. And I did a call with Rachel on Friday, and we went over these in great detail, what I took away from the last work session discussion was. Have those detailed conversations with the steering committee members, and so that was the steering committee plus Mr. Weldon. And, um, so we did that, and if we, if you're willing to entertain, um, Dave on our team is going to run through those areas and just give you a brief. Discussion about what, what the consultant called it, why we think it should be something different, and then what that classification is going to be. We're going to move pretty fast, so if you have question, just in an instance of time, we're going to move quickly, so if you have questions about it, it will not be the whole spiel on all the factors. Um, please do stop, Dave, raise your arm or something, and we'll, um, stop to talk it out. So if we are on board with that, we'll, we'll start to run through those.
Maybe.
Maybe. Alright, so, um. And here we have comparison pictures, on the left is a snip of the, uh, proposed future land use map that the consultant provided us. Um, on the right is going to be our edits, I apologize for the, um, quality of this, but, you know, we're only planners, we're not graphic professionals. Um, so we're going to start at Nixon Road and Saginaw Highway, um, so this blue dot to get you situated is the name of the clearance facility. So looking at what they did, they called it office, uh, commercial initially, um. We're calling it a hospital because the hospitals institute, or institutionally used much like our church, um, and government organization, um. What they propose is rural preserve for a lot of the periphery of this area, uh, which is, you know, more or less what's there now, they weren't looking. Ideally at what is reasonable to think that twenty years down the line could be, uh, so. Kind of the points in this area to talk about are, um, a new multi-family area that's going to be adjacent to Saginaw Highway. That goes into, uh, north, a northline function that goes into conventional, what's right, as of right now, conventional or low-density residential, typical suburb. Uh, if you will, uh, kind of points of this area are that on the north side especially, all these are very large. Vacant parcels owned by development companies, to think that they would stay rural preserve when they are also easily serviced by public utilities is, you know. Uh, kind of missing the boat a bit on that. Um, also to note is that there's a pretty medium-sized commercial district that's just waiting for utilities. Um, so, you know, as of right now, if you can envision the minus is fun time, uh, mini-golf, but the whole area around it. Is zone commercial and it's just not serviced by utilities, so when that comes and. It's not that far away, we could see a boom in commercial activity on Saginaw Highway. And that's just a reality of current zoning, um, you know, these properties have been zoned since the seventies or eighties commercial, and they've just been biding their time. Um, you know, Grand Ledge Ford was able to develop, um, without utilities, but they had to put in a super, um, system for, um. Public safety.
Like a reservoir, right? They basically have a reservoir on fire truck and draw from it, there's, since they don't have the facilities.
And there's also an agreement that they have to connect to public water and sewer when it becomes available, um, but I don't think the township wanted to do it again, so, you know, things haven't, weren't, didn't progress during that time. Did you want me to take questions now, or?
I, I think just as questions come up, please just let us know, otherwise we'll keep, we'll keep moving.
So then we'll, we'll talk about the Broadbent area, so, um, right here, this is Delta Crossings. Um, so red is, I mean, it's going to be M U R, orange, um, high-density residential, yellow would be a conventional residential. So that area is pretty much what you would, what we would, at least what they told us two years ago, how it would, um, pan out.
And that's on their phasing plan today, where the orange that Dave added to replace the pink, uh, those are all going to be multi-family in the, the, and a lot of it is the consultant doesn't, I think we all know this, but the consultant. They have staff in Ohio, they have staff in Metro Detroit, they don't have the boots on the ground and some of the information that we have, so there's bound to be some, some disconnects there.
Um, so then also on the south side, uh, again, on the west side of Broadbent, they missed to develop a parcel, called a rural preserve. Um, we've had conversations over the years about, um, residential opportunities on here, it's easily serviced by water, public water and sewer. Um, it just makes sense for it to be able to grow into something a little bit more than a preservation, uh, category. Going down Marketplace Drive, you'll see more high-density residential districts, uh, these parcels are all I'd owned, so another local developer who's known to try to get, you know. Um, their parcels developed, um, and we're proposing low-density residential or conventional suburban residential for the western half of it. Any questions?
David, uh, are you going down the list of those circles that you had up there?
Uh, yes.
More or less, yeah, so those were the, those are the highlighted areas just for space, I'm kind of, I've divvied this up a little bit differently.
Okay, I just want to know whether I should number these, one, two.
I think there's six of these, Mark. I think there's six of these, right, overheads?
Yeah, there's, there's six slides.
So we took the eighteen and combined them into six just for our, just for the overhead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if you're labeling one through six, it'll probably be, right?
Uh, no, not necessarily, because, uh, it went one through five down Saginaw Highway, because those were the most important. Conversation points, and then the other ones were north and south, which are kind of have a. You know, were choices, more map errors than conversation.
Because I didn't, I didn't see that sheet in the packet with the circles on it.
Yeah, so that was, that was an in-house slide that we were, we used during the.
It's okay.
Yeah, we were working on this up until this morning, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and then, um, I guess to points, to Hope's point. Um, on the north side of the river, uh, actually, so they call this suburban estate. And in the narrative for suburban estate, it talks about public utilities. Uh, there's no public utilities on the north side of the river, so we're proposing this all be rural preserve. It's really, you know. Basically, north, that area of the township is built out and it's going to be what it is, and I wouldn't expect to see much more new development unless something tragic happens.
So David, what, can you go back to the other slide?
Maybe. Sorry, we're in an internet version of PowerPoint, it's a little pickle.
It's all good. Um, so right on Saginaw, there's the, the blue component that's off Nixon, um, so just south of the. I guess it'd be just to the, yeah, right there, that one.
Um, so institutional use, uh, there's a small rectangular parcel right there that's owned by Consumers Energy. And then the remainder of this parcel, which is south of Lutens, is owned by a drainage, uh, under the drainage district, so it's. Um, in the twenty thirteen plan, we called it parks, now we're calling it institutional, I, you know, I would, I would hope that the drain. God, commissioner would let us, you know, possibly develop this into park like with paths and stuff like that, once this area develops twenty years from now.
Sure, um, second question is, um, you know, unofficially, I guess officially, unofficially, however this works out, we haven't been putting. Um, commercial property beyond Broadbent, and it looks like based on this that we're more receptive to that?
Uh, so the commercial, I, I, again, is still there, is currently zone commercial, it just hasn't been developed to such because utilities haven't been available. So those parcels have been zone commercial since the late eighties. So they were always, they were grandfathered in. Into when we said no new commercial, and whether we want to do moratorium, uh, whether, you know, those, those need to develop, that's a board decision. Um, but they currently are zone commercial, they've been zone commercial for the last forty years, and I'm just pointing to the, the, the fact that like. Utilities are a quarter mile away, and once they're there.
Yes.
Something's going to happen. On the south side, it's owned by Terry Hanks and, uh, Horat's Family Trust, and on the north side, um, you know, more people who are, are used to developing parcels.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Alright, so now we've gone kind of due south from that last one, we have Mount Hope Highway, or sorry, St. Joe Highway on the north. And Davis Highway, uh, this is the G M L G plant. Here, the changes are a little bit less, but we'll go over them. So this large blue square is just a parcel, it's owned by Grand Ledge Public Schools, it was, um, recommended for rural preserve. Uh, since it's institutional use, we have institutional category, we just decided to call it out, same thing with this corner piece, it's owned by the county drain office, so just calling that out, it's blue. This piece right here, it has, um, street connections to the, the, um, street connections and utility connections waiting for it to develop. From the existing single-family neighborhood, so we're proposing this to be, uh, conventional residential. Same goes for this piece right here, and then these two pieces right here, which are the Campbell Farm. Uh, interesting about this piece is that once these are ready to develop, it's also going to extend Broadbent down likely to, uh, Mount Hope Highway. Which is going to have a dramatic change on what Mount Hope feels like in my personal opinion. Uh, but again, you know, these are recommendations based on existing land uses, uh, this neighborhood. Has a street stub waiting for this parcel to develop, we've taken questions over the last six years on, um, how this parcel can develop. Uh, so it's, it's just a matter of time. Um, also changing, um, so right now, if you see this red square, this, the top half of it is the Sikh, um, temple. That, uh, was built a few years ago, so we are at Mount Hope and Canal. Uh, so since that's a religious use, calling it blue for institutional, um, and then the parcels around it, uh, low-density residential, conventional suburban residential. Which is, uh, similar to what we called it in twenty thirteen. And then, also, excuse me, David Howell's comments, uh, last meeting that he would like to highlight the solar farm parcels. As institutional, since they are own, or, I don't know if they're owned by BW, BW accepts electricity into their system, I think goodbye. Um, so that's what these three parcels are represented in blue. So now we're in the northeast corner of the township, uh, we have the Dr. Mills Development right here, this is Waverly, Delta River Drive. Willow, Saginaw Highway, um, so starting here on the corner of Willow and Canal, there's a probably nine existing single-family homes approximately. Just identifying those as potential high-density residential uses, again, future land use map is not saying that they have to go, they can be. Single-family homes in perpetuity, it's just if anyone ever wants to develop them, understanding that high-density residential surrounds these properties. And just giving them the opportunity to, you know, develop as they probably should. Um, then going a mile east, we're at Willow Highway in Crete, so this is that farm parcel that's across the street from the Bible College. Again, this has connections to the existing neighborhood with stubs for utilities and streets, identifying that, um, as a low-density residential parcel. Uh, around Lansing Mall, they had this pink district, which was M U R, and as Peter said, we, or discussed earlier, we've combined those districts. So everything that was pink is now going to be red. Uh, going into Waverly, you can see this big yellow parcel, that's the old Rafferty High School parcel, they have a conventional residential for, you know, that just. Doesn't necessarily make sense, given what we know about the parcel, so we're proposing the top half be blue institutional use, because that's going to be the site of. Some large detention ponds that are community or owned by the, uh, bank drain. And then this, uh, flex zone for the southern half. And, you know, interesting about this, because it is, um, owned by the Eaton County Drain Office or the Bank Stream rather. Uh, you know, it could be a catalyst for the Waverly area, and, you know, we may be able to help influence how that parcel develops. Those were all the changes, uh, for this area, if we have, if we don't have any questions, we can continue on. Alright, so now we're on the eastern middle part of the township, so we have Michigan Avenue, um, the ninety-six freeway and Mount Hope. Uh, there's not that much change. Uh, there's not that much change, but a lot of it's gonna focus on Saint Joe and Creites. So this is the original one, what they um. Recommended, so this is office commercial, now remember, remember, it's now office commercial residential. So identifying that A in this existing office strip. Uh, there's some vacant parcels which could be high-density residential if they choose, they could remain office, they could go to commercial. It's, you know, adjacent to freeways and um honestly, just giving them the, the tools that they need to develop these parcels. Which have been vacant for twenty or thirty years. Um, also identifying uh the Markart Farm parcel as M U R. Uh, you know, it's basically the, the general um. Feeling from odd owners on, on what they wanna do. And, you know, whether it's actual mixed use or just a conventional plan where a little bit of high-density residential or maybe a. Part of the low-density residential with commercial along Creites, kind of gives them the freedom to come up with something hopefully creative. So we talked about down here, and that's the Sikh parcel. And then across, if you see, this is Echo Valley subdivision. Uh, you know, normal single-family subdivision, they listed as rural preserve. So identifying that as conventional residential, low-density residential. Um, adjacent to is the Larry Clark um residential property, it's kind of a, a unique estate parcel. We, we honestly were kind of unsure what to classify it as, and sure, rural pres- preserve seems fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's kind of a, you know, a nice buffer in between your conventional residential and the Amazon parcel, which is what is at the corner of, of Creites and Mount Hope. Uh, I guess also then we'll go to the bottom right corner, so this was a fle- a recommendation for Flex District. Um, so this is uh basically between Lansing Road and Old Lansing Road. With Waverly at your eastern point, there's an existing gas station right there. A couple of years ago, we had a special Lany's permit for pet rally trucking that wanted to go around that gas station. Uh, so the consultant had identified it as a flex area. Uh, we are pretty confident this is gonna continue to uh be developed for industrial uses. So recommending that this corner on north of Mount Hope Highway be uh be recommended for industrial use. There's already existing industrial uses on Old Lansing Road and Mount Hope. Um, I believe their truck repair. Okay, any questions? Um, so this one's gonna basically talk about the Millet area, um, this is kind of where we're gonna spend the most time. Oops, sorry. Alright, well, um, so this large red parcel is the D and K parcel, uh, former. Uh, Dragon Movie Theater, there's, they're recommending it for uh commercial use at this point. Um, we've identified it as an industrial use, we feel it's more likely tied to it industrial user, uses, so Lansing Road. And then there is some, also commercial office resident, or recommend here, what this is, is the B and I bar. Uh, and then across the street is the old Millet Schoolhouse. The owner of Millet Schoolhouse has identified it that he wants to keep it a residential use, so he just bought it and is putting a bunch of money into fixing it up. For that purpose, so because of that, we've recommended uh suburban estate for that piece. Um, and kept the commercial um designation or mixed use, I guess, in the, in this case. For the B and I parcel and the existing parcel to the north, but. Uh, we've also cleaned up some um conventional residential where they had suburban estate, so you know, we're. Not that much difference, but if we have the ability to kind of match what's there, why not do it? Uh, so those are the, you know, kind of where you live by approximately conventional residential. And then we've also called their um original Millet uh Hammer area, a traditional neighborhood. And picked up two, you can't see them, cause it's, we don't have the ability to zoom in, but there's two um. Church parcels that they didn't identify, and then also in Millet is the um. Fire station number three, I guess it's called, it's the unmanned fire building, they're marking that as blue for um. Administrative or government use.
What is that down on Jolly? That little blue square that?
That's a church.
Oh.
So that's an existing church, so since we're calling churches blue, they get to be blue. So this is our version of what the future Lany's map would look like. So in generally, you're gonna have more yellow right here and some orange around Saginaw Highway and also on Marketplace. Uh, so basically, one, two, three, four new areas for a higher-density residential. Um, and then just conventional residential where it makes sense with the um existence of uh utilities.
So, thanks Dave, so for, excuse me. Our plan is to submit this back to the consultant team and have them update the fancy map. And then we'll have a better idea, um, and that will, you know, this will continue then to move forward with the rest of the plan. They're working on the draft chapters right now. And, uh, you know, the board hasn't seen this, no one, the. Public had some chances during the open houses to, to see these, but we would, they will get another crack at it when this goes back. So when the draft comes back to the township, we, you know, at some point, we've gotta start a sixty-three day review process. Where everybody in the township has um another set of eyes on this whole document, so we'll have a chance to receive more feedback. If there's any designations in here that, that scare people. Um, our net, we don't, we're not trying to be particularly aggressive, we're just really trying to, again, you know, our team, we don't, there's no politics involved with the planning department. So we're just looking at like, re- realistically, what do we think is gonna happen in twenty years? You know, kind of in a, with blinders on to a certain extent, cause not considering some of the other. You know, political factors potentially. So that's, yeah, that's our take on this, so our team spent, you know, quite a few hours kind of deliberating over the map. And thank you to everybody that was willing to sit with us and go over at the grainy other level of these parcels and really try to understand some of the back. Uh, background information that in- impacts or like influences why we propose some of these changes.
Yeah, I've been, I've been looking over these and I would just encourage everybody to kind of get a little. Deeper down in the weeds on these descriptions of the areas uh. For future land use, and in particular, what I'm trying to focus on. Is, does that description enable or preclude certain kinds of. Uses, so I, we wanna be very careful with permissive or restrictive language in those. That could show up and bite us down the line, uh, when we get into zoning and that kind of stuff, there's kind of take a look at them and. If there's something in there that you go, whoa, that wouldn't allow this to do. That, that's words we may wanna take a look at, cause again, that's that nexus between this stuff and zoning. Where the rubber really hits the road, so.
And we did our best to be respectful of any kind of really dramatic changes that would scare people that, you know, because with it. I, I think Dave mentioned this earlier, but this master plan, the future land use map, doesn't mean anything has to happen. So I mean, people can stay in their homes on, if they had a family estate for the last three generations, there's, there's no attempt by art, by us to, to. To have that end, it's more just if, if the circumstances, if their circumstances change and an opportunity comes along, based on what we know. This is probably with the pressure, the development pressure they're gonna face, and what type of use might work there functionally, kind of, and thinking holistically. I've only gotten one call from a panicked resident so far, but I think it was just a misunderstanding on the categories. But we are gonna face more, I've been through this process in one other community and, um, you know, I think once it starts, once this gets out there a little further, we're gonna get some questions. But that's, I think that's why this conversation about the categories is so important, wanna be able to explain it to them and really own, you know. I keep telling the consultant, when they leave, this becomes ours, and they forget, people forget who made it, it doesn't really matter at that point. We gotta own this thing and be, be ready to articulate what, what it is, what it is, what it means, what it means, the future. So we got to get there, we're not there tonight, but we will get there. Well, that's all, that's all for our, for our team, so unless there's any lingering questions about this, or certainly feel free after the fact, if you wanna reach out to me. Um, you know, you had an epiphany at some point, or a thought that wasn't, didn't get out tonight, let us know. But thank you for the time.
Nothing further from uh anybody, uh, then we'll move into any additional comments, Peter.
Nothing for us, um, this is just a work session, so I mean, I can, we're not making a decision about this, but. I'd sent you all an email about, we do have a meeting planned for November twenty-four, there are two public hearings on that. Meeting, so if you could take a look at your personal calendars and let us know if we're gonna get quorum for that meeting on the twenty-fourth. So we've got a rezoning, one is a property on West Saginaw that wants to go from single-family to office. And that there is another rezoning that is.
Misfit Mittens.
What's that?
Misfit Mittens.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, the Misfit Mittens property on West Mount Hope. Um, is proposing, they, they have an opportunity to expand their operation. And they have, they're adjacent to a single-family parcel that they own, and they'd like to change that to A G two. So I don't think it's anything particularly controversial, um, but you'll, we're, we're working on the staff memos right now to try to. You know, to facilitate those conversations on the twenty-fourth, so please let us know if you're, we, we, we need at least a quorum to hold those public hearings, so please let us know. Uh, if you're not gonna be able to make that, and then um, kind of looking into December. Tendatively have a public hearing on the eighth, I am in receipt of an application for a raising canes development. At the northwest corner of Elmwood and West Saginaw, it is the green space adjacent to the mall. But green spaces maybe not the most accurate representation, it is area that is undeveloped next to the mall, so um. The, a lot of moving parts to that project, they submitted a special land use permit for a drive-through restaurant. And also site plan reviews, they've got everything, just started going through it this morning. Um, the reason I, it, it could be complicated other than that, you know, it's a franchise, the only one in this area is in East Lansing. I just happened to work on the one in East Lansing, totally different beast in East Lansing, it's a, in downtown East Lansing, it's a walk-up. Restaurant, there's no drive-through aspect to it, it is insanely busy. Uh, uh, and now granted, it's downtown East Lansing, it's set up for kind of an after-hours bar thing. Um, could I, if I remember right, this, this company does have um later hours, I wanna say they're open till two or something. So that'll, that'll come out as part of the hearing, but I just wanted to get that on your radar, that we're targeting December eighth, uh, pending some gap in the application materials. So that's kind of what we've got in the shoot.
I would imagine it's gonna be busy like a chick boy.
That's kind of where I'm going with it too, is, you know, it'll be the second one in this area, the first that's accessible by uh, uh, non-students essentially. Not that you can't go to the slancy one, but I always think of it down, some of those areas, that's not, that's not for us, that's for the students. Um, so this'll be, you know, high vehicle count, I've got a traffic study, I just started looking into today. Um, and, and there's a challenge, the challenge there on Elmwood is that there's no, there's a dedicated left, but there's not a lot of backup room there, so a cute car. To access their site, they'd be turning on Elmwood left into the development, kind of where Best Buy, the drive is now, but they have a new drive south of that. So they're proposing it as a ride-in, ride-out, but as we'll get into that case, I mean, I, I know person, I am concerned about that right now. The queuing, if you mean, we all drive into the building here, how hard it can be without a dedicated left. Um, and the, the stacking that happens and the confusion that happens with traffic. So we could potentially looking at a situation like that. That's, I think that's just a teaser for now, well, I'll show you the plans and we will share any comments and um concerns that we have. Certainly about it, or if that, you know, the applicant may need to go back and sharpen their pencil on some things, but we'll, we'll have all that for you. Looking at December eight, I will let you know, for some reason that does not happen. And then that's your only meeting, or last meeting for the, till the end of the year.
Peter, we'll have a big year on November twenty-fourth.
Yes, okay, thank you.
And I have jury duty on December eight.
Okay.
So I'll know that morning whether or not.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Yeah. Okay. And that's all for, for us for now. Unless I missed something, sorry guys. Thank you.
Any further comments from commissioners? See none, declare this meeting adjourned.